I'm gonna bring in the new meeting with a great, we're calling it Wonder Boy, like a natural. This was made by Claudia Peterson's son, Nick Peterson, for the city of Sandy. So, let's start with the roll call, I mean the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff, can you start the vote call?
Yes, Councilor Mayton, President, Councilor Smallwood, Councilor Sheldon, Councilor Ramsair,
Here.
Councilor, uh, Handley, sorry.
Here.
Councilor Huckinson.
Here.
Mayor Walker.
Here. Okay, so we're gonna get started with the oaths of office, and then we'll review the agenda. We are gonna take the oaths of office one at a time, and there will be opportunities for taking pictures after each oath, so that we can get that done, and so I welcome your family members, or anybody else, friends and family members that wanna come up and get in a picture with you, and hopefully Jeff and City Manager Deans can also have a picture with the new equals being sworn in. So, let's get started with that, I guess.
Mayor, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I Kathleen Walker do solemnly swear.
I Kathleen Walker do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy Mayor.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy Mayor.
During my entire term of office.
During my entire term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. A few, there's a few folks that came to see me, Jeff, and my family and friends. One up here. Yeah. Twelve mothers, these are the, they used to be a coast team called Twelve Tough Mothers. And I was the driver. But it was all these twelve tough mothers here, so.
We all wish we could have done it without the driver. We needed the driver.
These are all my girlfriends, and these are my wonderful daughters and my wonderful husbands. Thank you, sweetie.
They're laying behind the next seat.
All right, then, Grace. Okay, next victim.
Your next thing is. Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I Richard Sheldon do solemnly swear.
I Richard Sheldon do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
During my entire term of office.
During my entire term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Basketball season, we need to look back my family at that house.
Sorry. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I Christina Ramsair do solemnly swear.
I Christina Ramsair do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
During my entire term of office.
During my entire term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Picture already? All right. Good job. Oh, wonderful. All right, ready? One, two, three. Another one, one, two, three. Very good.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I Don Huckinson do solemnly swear.
I Don Huckinson do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
During my entire term of office.
During my entire term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Yeah.
Back up here.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give everybody just a minute or two if they wanna say anything. So folks, Rich, why don't you start?
Sure. So like I said, basketball season's in full effect, so my family couldn't be here. But they are listening, so I'm gonna say this for their purposes, and I do wanna thank my wife Emily, my sons Jonah and Asher, and daughter Harper. They're the most supportive, like, family you could have, and I'm just so lucky to have, so thank you for that. I look forward to working with everybody up here, it's been a second term. I feel like you're just getting your wheels under you for like, at least half of it, and probably not close to almost all of it, to be honest. So, but we have a lot of work ahead of us, and I'm really excited about the the direction that we're on, and I'm really hoping that we can rally together and kinda help bring this comprehensive plan into action, at the same time hopefully getting some resources to help us moving along even faster, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, thank you for everybody who came to support me tonight, and for who so supported me through this whole campaign, which I started really late. I did a lot of things that I didn't really know that I was brave enough to do, but here I am, and I'm confident that I am where I need to be, and I look forward to taking Sandy into the future. Thank you, everybody.
My wife asked me, she said, "I'll be here if you want me to be here," which is, it's okay. But you can't do this on your own, you have to have the support of your family, friends, and then, and the community, it's, uh, this is my second term, like, Rich, and, uh, I do feel like I finally almost have the job figured out, and I'm looking forward, as you are, to, to really hitting, hitting the road running and seeing what we can do. And I just wanna say thanks to those who've served before, some of you are in the room, who've dedicated significant portions of your lives to public service, and for those who may be thinking about it down the road, if you have the opportunity, do it. Fifty percent of the town will hate you, but that's just the way it's gonna go, and, and it's what we need. We need people to step up and do it in spite of those who would, who would oppose them, so. Take that opportunity, serve wherever you can, thanks.
Yeah, they're fifty, love you, Doc.
Well, and that fifty changes.
Fifty, I, I'm only at about thirty, but. Daydreaming. Well, tonight I feel really kinda nervous, happy, excited, challenged, proud, and humble all at the same time. I'm excited about the opportunities to help Sandy, but mindful and worried about the steep hiking needed to deal with some of the challenges that we have ahead of us. I'm not great on steep hikes, as all my friends out there will tell you, but I take it slow, and I keep at it till I reach the top. I wanna express my sincere thanks to the mayors that have gone before me, both Linda and Stan, and Bill, so they have kind of laid the path, and I hope to fill their orange shoes. I wanna have sincere thanks to the city staff and our city councilors here tonight. I'm excited to work with all of you, I'm grateful to all the Sandy residents, and welcome your ideas and feedback. A special thanks to my treasured family and friends who really provide me great advice on how to handle things, and they're always my number one priority. I really appreciate this leadership opportunity as mayor, and I'll work with great, with this great team here gathered tonight, to climb these mountains ahead and improve Sandy's future. As we know, the best views come after the hardest climbs, so I'm excited about that. I've loved meeting all the Sandy neighbors over the years that I've lived here, our, our personal outlook's very, very much, you know, huge, huge, diverse town that we have, but we all wanna live in a friendly community with safe neighborhoods, good parks, adequate streets, affordable utilities, and access to job shopping and the surrounding forests. We know growth is inevitable, but we wanna keep a small-town feeling. My goals have always been to support responsible and resident-friendly policies and actions, and when, when we make the city decisions, we need to clearly explain the issues and options and to our residents, and then listen to their feedback and their ideas. We should be asking both ourselves and them, how does this benefit current and future residents? Sandy excels in many areas, we have some awesome, uh, Sandy Net Service, our transit service spans the ski areas to Clackamas Town Center, and reliably gets folks around town, good job, Andy. And of course, the Sandy's awesome trails, parks and trails are my pride and joy, as everybody knows, including Mining Park, Tickle Creek, and our very popular new Cedar Park. Sandy's challenges are also many and costly. Our water and wastewater systems are unfortunately both aging out at about the same time, and we're replacing the worn-out infrastructure at the Alder Creek site, and we're also having to connect, reconnect to and extend our connection to the Bull Run Treatment Plant that's being built nearby. Our wastewater discharge site is the largest and most costly issue we face. We have the most restrictive wastewater limitations in the state that we have to follow. Moving this discharge site to either Gresham or the Sandy River are both prohibitively expensive, and honestly, we just don't have the funds to cover the cost, so that's where we're, we're at this month, and, and in the, in the next year or two, trying to figure out what we do with that huge, huge challenge. It's gonna require more funding than, than we have now, so our number one goal as council, I hope, is to get the state and federal grant funding to complete these water and wastewater infrastructure needs. We've gotten some loans, but we really need to have grant money to fill that gap. We also will be increasing SDCs for developers, system development charges, so that they're paying their share of these costs, and it's not all being borne by the utility rate payers. Finally, it's vital that, as Don mentioned, that we encourage our neighbors to become involved in city leadership. There's so much to learn and miles to hike, but we can share our map and trust them to carry on after us. I look forward to collaborating with all of you, our businesses, and especially our residents, so make, to make decisions that keep Sandy the special place that we call home. So let's start this hike. All right, thank you. All right, so now we're just gonna do a quick review of the agenda, and, and ask if there's any changes. The first order of business is electing a council's president, and then we will take any public comments, and note that if you wanna comment on the hearing that's later, there will be a separate public comment hearing at that time. We'll then follow up with any response to public comments from previous meetings, and next comes the approval of the consent agenda, followed by a presentation by our Sandy Police Department, and then we have a public hearing on the zone change at the operations center. Lastly, we have the city manager, city councilor, and mayor reports. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on and try electing the council president. Well, actually. Yeah. Yep, yeah, we have to elect the council president next, and then we'll do the public comment. The council president, I think most of you are familiar with the duties that come along with that position, and what I'd like to do is ask if there's are any nominations from any of you to, there serve as, or nominate someone for council president.
I'd like to make a nomination. May I nominate somebody?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Don Huckinson.
Okay.
I will second the nomination.
All right. I have a motion to nominate Don Huckinson, and it's from Counselor Sheldon, and a second from Counselor Ramsair, to nominate Don Huckinson as council president. Are there any other nominations? Seeing nobody else throwing their hat in the ring, okay. Shall we take a vote? All those in favor of having Don Huckinson be council president, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? It's unanimous. All right, Don. Welcome as our new council president.
Thank you. Thanks for the support, I, I actually look forward to working with all of us. It's nice that we, most of us have a relationship already, and I think this last election was hard in a lot of ways. It was a reminder of things that I need to personally do better, in terms of listening, and making sure that the community feels like they're heard, not just feels like they're heard, they are heard, and putting myself in a position where I can get that feedback, and so that's something that I've pledged in building a better job of this year. So, thank you.
All right, this is the time for public comment. As I said before, the testimony for the public hearing later on will, will happen then, but at this point, the council welcomes your comments on other matters at this time. The mayor will call out myself, I will call out each person. Get used to that. I will call out each person when it's their turn to speak for up to three minutes. We've already got some folks who have filled out speaking forms. If you are attending the meeting in person, please, we've got the forms, and, and you can fill out another form if you, there's nobody who has, if there's somebody else who hasn't filled out a form, please quickly fill it out. Forms are available on the table out in the council chambers. If you're attending the meeting via Zoom, please complete the online comment signup web form. Do we have any signups?
And no, Mayor, we didn't.
Okay. Okay, very good, well then we've got four folks scheduled to talk tonight. The first person is Julie Wilde.
No. Let me move that podium back for you. We moved this station.
Okay, somewhere on here, it was supposed to say that you have to provide your name and your address, or provide it by email to the recorder.
Okay. My name is Julie Wilde, and I am the owner of 38091 Sunset Street, which is the little church behind the Tollgate Inn. So, it's been sitting there for a couple of years, and so I'd just like to talk about that a little bit, I've had some buyers, seems like it's been very difficult for the city to allow a buyer to use the property, so I just wanna talk about this a little bit. So, it would be great to have a business in there for the city of Sandy. It would be paying tax revenue, could employ people. It would also provide some services for the city, rather than just having the building be sitting there. While it's been there, there's been a few instances of vandalism, and in this way, it's actually cost the city some money to have the building there, because the police have had to use their services to deal with it, I've had to go and go through the whole district attorney situation. There's like this whole process when something happens, and then you have to, it's just, there's just a lot of pieces to it that are costing resources, pretty much. So, it's a solid little building, it's a unique historical building, I've talked to the Oregon Historical Society, it sounds like it qualifies to be a historical building, I have not done that process. It's also made with old-growth fir and redwood, and you just can't get buildings like this nowadays, and, you know, it'd be great to repurpose this building, so. I realize there could be some limitations with that, but usually with a historical building, there are certain, you know, accommodations for the understanding that this building was built way before we had the modern situation that we have now, so. Um. Then there, I, from a personal standpoint, I feel like there's way too many tear downs, I just, these old structures should be maintained and preserved as much as possible, we just can't get them back. Um, so the city has given me permits to replace all the water lines, replace all the sewer lines and the roof, and I've done those improvements, and, um, I'm not sure of exactly all the issues, I just really don't know enough about this, but the city at one point did make all those houses on that street, side of the street, commercial, and from what I've talked to about, people usually when a city does that, they also, you know, have discussions about parking and about the future, they don't just take someone's house and make it a commercial designation without like, more of a plan about that, and so. The one thing I did wanna ask about is, on the other side of the street, there's already street parking, and when you look at it, it looks like you could extend that down the opposite side of the street, maybe when they redo all of the sewers, there's gonna be the sidewalk then on the other side, sorry, and maybe it's possible that that could be extended for parking, and the city needs parking. So, those are my ideas, my thoughts, I don't know how long I've gone.
That's been about three minutes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. The second person to speak is Chris Hawes. It's Chris Hawes. Good job.
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Chris Hawes, I'm current board chair for Clackamas Fire District. As most of you probably know, since July 2023, Clackamas Fire's been providing emergency services to the Sandy Fire District area, including the city of Sandy. And I just wanted to take a minute, introduce myself to those of you that had met me. And also, I would thank you for joining us, I, I'm also, I'm board chair for Sunrise Water Authority, because I had the brilliant idea four years ago for run for two offices, and due to the poor judgment of voters here I sit. We have enjoyed the partnership we've had with the people out here. I'm personally glad to serve out here. I'm a graduate of Barlow High School, more years than I care to admit in Plife Company, so I, I have an opportunity to serve my friends and neighbors. You guys have been a big part, my, my one touchdown in high school football was against the Sandy freshman team, so. I have that going for me. So, I just wanted to say hi to all of you, thank you for doing this. Our government doesn't work unless people are willing to do this, and it's not for the high pay or the overwhelming awesome power you have, it's just really not, it's that somebody has to make decisions, and here we are, so, thanks for doing this, if there's any questions or comments, or you need, my staff can find me, and I can't stay, 'cause I have a five-year-old great niece who had her tonsils out, and I've been ordered to bling her ice cream and read Velveteen Rabbit. So off I go, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very much. Okay, the next person that we have is Jim Gess. Gastr, Gaesther?
Gaethar.
Gaethar, I'm sorry, guys.
Well, I'm not a very good public speaker, for one.
Can you give your name and address first, please?
Jim Gaethar, with Gaethar and Associates. I'm representing the lady that's trying to buy her piece of property, which I did not realize she was gonna be here today. You know, my physical address is Eagle Creek, Oregon.
Okay.
So. First of all, congratulations, everybody here. Congratulations to you guys, we're getting your honors, thank. So. First of all, thank you for allowing me to voice my client's concerns at the 38091 Sunset Street. You know, last April, we came to City Sandy, asked about what we needed to do to put a daycare in that. They provided me a list. And I asked questions, and I got a response. They were very forward on most of it. Our understanding is that the church has been vacant fourteen years. The building basically been there for fourteen years. They answered, the questions they answered was a minimum, and then they said that we have to do a pre-approval app to get basically more. After thousands of dollars of getting a civil engineer, an architect, we had a meeting on December nineteenth, and it was apparent that time, they already knew that that lot was not big enough to accommodate your guys' restrictions, and building codes, parking codes for one. So, and your variances in your green space. So. We would like to know that upfront, and we wouldn't be in this position. So. So my client feel that she was led down a path that wasn't exactly correct, okay? We spent thousands of dollars trying to to purchase her piece of property. We're not quite done yet, we're still trying to work things out here. But there's some things that's not clear to me, I've been here since seventy-seven, I went to Sandy High School. There used to be a road there called Virginia Street, we don't know where it went to, it's now a private access to the back of the bakery for one. We don't know what happened there, we don't know why the city of Sandy has set restrictions on that, in that area, making it commercial, and then this lot next door is a private access, it's getting commercial traffic on it. So. Was there any consideration of what was gonna go on with that piece of property when all these concessions were made? To develop that piece of that bakery, and turn those others into commercial lots? So. We would like, keep continuing working with City Sandy, see if we can push past this and make it happen, we think that the daycare in City Sandy would be perfect. There's only two, neither one has got any parking, they're off-street loading, so. You know, we've made four different plans, and they've all been turned down. So. I don't know if we can do anything from here.
We, so the way it works is that we don't, you know, since we don't really know anything about the issue and stuff, but we don't respond at this point.
Sure.
So what, what we do is in our next meeting, we'll, you know, provide a response, or probably sooner, they'll be getting voted in to talk about specific issues and things like that, is what I would hope, so.
That would be perfect, the, the building department has all my information.
All right.
So.
38091 Sunset, that's the property we're talking about.
It's the old church, like I said, it was built I don't know what, thirty years ago, and it's always been a gathering place. There's never been anything other than, it would be a perfect spot for what we're looking to do.
All right.
All right, thank you very much, free time.
I've been in contact with the buyer. So, it's not a lot of money.
Uh, last is Kevin Moss.
Thank you, city councilors, Mayor Walker, Council President Huckinson, city councilors, Kevin Moss, 1802 Davis Street, just a few blocks over. Coming by kind of with a traffic safety concern, so over by the Uh, coming night kind of with a traffic safety concern. So over by the Saint Michael's Church, Langin Sand and Gary Street, there's been an increased number of cars on the side street there onto Gary that when you turn from Langin Sand onto Gary, you have cars right at the end of the block and parked by the stop sign that are preventing access. So if you have cars coming head on, there's probably going to be an accident there sooner rather than later. So everyone takes it slow. So just wondering if the city can kind of look into that of to just to get that egress there to allow cars coming out and coming in to have that safety zones there. Um, special shout out to our Sandy police who are the best local police in the entire county. So thank you for all your service. And councillor Handley, it's nice to see you up there following the footsteps of councillor Exer that I've known you. So thank you for your service, the community, and people do excellent roles. So thank you, city councillors.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Mr. Moss, before you go, the cars are parked on Gary or the?
They're, they're parked on Gary.
They're parked on Gary. So it's Langin Sand turning on the Gary.
Yes. So yeah, on both sides, right on the corner and at that stop sign and the same way on the hill down to the Sam Stop that sits at the border. If you go further down Davis to turn right, then you have the both that the stop sign there and at the bottom stop sign. So it's as I leave each morning, come down Davis is like have to almost go in the middle to turn on. So just.
Thank you. All right. That's all the public comment. And we don't have any response from previous comments. Is that?
There was no comment at the last.
Okay, very good. All right. Um, then the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And in the consent agenda, um, we have the uh, city council meeting minutes, the Sandy Net Advisory Board appointments and the resolution regarding the audit correction corrective action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second, what's second? We have a motion from councillor Sheldon and a second from councillor Lynn Handley to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, vote aye. Be voting aye. Motion approved. Right. Next, we have a presentation from our police department.
So mayor, I think for the lieutenant of, it would be you delivering it.
Making pictures again.
It was counted, thirty, thank you.
Raise your right hand. Say after me. I Samuel Craven.
I Samuel Craven.
Do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws therefore.
And the laws therefore.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of a police lieutenant.
Discharge the duties of a police lieutenant.
During my continuance therein to the best of my ability.
During my continuance therein to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
They're going to want, they're going to want this on.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dennis Craven. And the next item on the agenda is a presentation by the chief.
Chief, would you like to podium back or how do you want to do it?
Um, I can just stand there and.
Yeah, whatever you like. Yeah.
There's maybe people online, so.
So thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Uh, my name is Patrick Husk. I'm the chief of police for Sandy. Pretty big crowd. I don't think Manny expected such a big night. All too often, our law enforcement officers are doing things that go unseen and nobody ever really knows about. And thanks to Officer Santos, who is actually out working tonight, had to take somebody to jail for us to keep our streets safe. He could be here, but he relayed a story back to us that he had overheard from Sergeant Herrera. So I'm going to read this, uh, real quick. Uh, so this is the letter that I wrote for Manny for this life-saving war. Uh, on Sunday, September first, two thousand twenty-four, around seven P M. Sergeant Herrera was off duty and at dinner with his wife at a restaurant in Boring, Oregon. As Herrera and his wife were walking to their table, Herrera realized that a gentleman was coughing. He recognized that the man was choking and ran over to render aid, ultimately performing the Heimlich maneuver. This dislodged the food that was blocking the gentleman's airway. Herrera stayed with the man until medical personnel arrived on scene to take over. Sergeant Herrera demonstrated that even while off duty, he stands ready to assist those around him. Herrera has received training throughout his career in law enforcement that he was able to rely on in a time of need. His fast action and willingness to serve likely saved the man's life that night. Sandy Police Department policy allows for a life-saving medal to be awarded to any police department employee that performs an exceptional act under emergency conditions wherein a service is rendered that results directly to sustain a human life. Sergeant Herrera, it is with great pride that I award you this life-saving medal for your action on September first, two thousand twenty-four. Congratulations and thank you for your dedicated service.
Manny, now that he didn't tell you, let's have to give a speech.
Don't eat the number seven. I guess I should have thought that out. Can you take some pictures, Dave?
Yep. Manny, I've also got your number.
Am I up? I have no idea. You're on the agenda. I just had like a meeting out there.
Well, both of those actions were very well, uh, well deserved. Both to, uh, congratulations to Lieutenant Craven and to Sergeant Herrera for saving the life. That's amazing. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the public hearing, uh, ordinance two, 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 twenty twenty-five dash zero one, our first ordinance of the year. Um, a zone change for the Sandy Operations Center.
Thank you, mayor. Um, we have a proposed zone change this evening for the operations center. Um, modifying the zoning from I one to I two. Um, as you know, we've got some expansion happening down at that site, uh, specifically for the transit, administrative, maintenance bay, et cetera, conference room, training room, other uh, features there. And so this amendment is, or zone change rather, is related to that project. But that, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Thanks, Tyler.
Okay, for, um, for folks in the audience who are online, the opportunity to offer public testimony for this hearing will occur after the staff report concludes. So, um, is that's what, that's what my notes say. Is that right? Yeah. Okay.
So still.
No, so, so we can take this opportunity for you to read, like, the, the extensions and conflicts of interest.
Okay. So we do that before the staff report? Got it. Okay. All right. Um. Uh, so we will open the public hearing, state the ordinance, um, uh, let's open the public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh one at seven forty P M. Um, are there any extensions declared from the hearing body?
I need to disclose that I was part of the decision-making when my time on the planning commission. I actually introduced it to be to put into city council. So I need to let you know that that I was part of the decision-making process to approve that before it came to council.
Was that, is, does that require, uh, any kind of a, um, abstention?
No, it, it is a, um, no, it's not a conflict, uh, councillor. It's, it's a, um, blanking on the word. It's fine. All she had to do was declare it and we're good to move on.
We'll, we'll note it for the record.
And are there any conflicts of interest to declare from the hearing body? Seeing none? Um, Kelly, go ahead and proceed with your staff report.
Thank you, mayor. It's ex parte is what it is.
Right.
So, um, yeah, as Tyler, uh, already alluded to, this is for the Sandy Transit Operations Center, also known as the Public Works World Headquarters. I'm sure there's a couple of other names for it as well. Um, it's at sixteen six one zero Champion Way, right across the street from the Sandy Cinemas. Okay, here we go. I think this computer's getting a little old. Okay. So as I just said, this is the site location and the property that we're uh, going to be discussing tonight during the quasi judicial hearing is the one highlighted in the blue. Um, just, uh, just a few things about this zone change request. It would be changing the zoning from Industrial Park, which is I one, to Light Industrial, which is I two. Sandy Area Metro and the city of Sandy is the applicant. Um, the, the current operations center, so both the transit operations and public works operations is defined as a major public facility and is considered a conditional use in both the existing zoning district and the proposed zoning district. Um, it already received a conditional use approval in two thousand and six when it had a master plan uh, designation for the site. So we don't, I just want to point it out for the record, but we don't need to worry about any of that. It's just some information to have for part of your decision. Um, city staff, the planning division believe that the historic pattern and what the uses is actually more appropriately suited for the I two zoning district. So if you look at our zoning map and you look at what's in the I one zoning district, there's nothing that is, is industrial as the city site. So some examples of what's in the I one zoning district currently, the tractor supply store, the A M P M, the free up mini storage, the Sandy Cinema, uh, Smokey Hearth, Nia's Bakery, uh, Abundant Life Church, all of that is I one, and it's more of a commercial use for the most part.
They were, those latter ones, the, the Kasop stuff, Prestige Devote, that was all under, uh, how they contested variance though, if I recall correctly.
I, I'm not sure that was before my time here.
It was.
Yeah. So th- those are kind of what you would think of as our industrial park properties in Sandy currently. Most of the sites that are kind of constructed with like a maintenance and facility yard and material yard and maintenance bays, like is at the Sandy Transit and Public Works Operation Facility. If you looked around in Sandy, those are all zoned I two. All the other sites that those sorts of, that sort of use is on in Sandy is an I two zone. So that's why we say from a historical pattern, it should probably have always been zoned I two, um, especially when it was built in two thousand and six. That's probably when it should have been rezoned to I two at that point. It just wasn't. Um, and now we're, we're, we're thinking it's probably time to do that. Um, the I two district is more suitable for manufacturing and warehousing. Um, and for, for uses that do not depend on high visible visibility. So exactly what the Public Works and Transit Operations Center is. And one other important, important fact to note is that this zone change does not require comprehensive plan map change. And that's because the comprehensive plan doesn't break it down to different districts. It doesn't break it down to I one, I two, I three. It just labels it all as industrial. So it doesn't need a comp plan map change. Here is the site again. This is another way to look at it. This is the existing zoning designation. So you have the subject site with the blue lettering over the top of it. The light bluish color is the other I one industrial park properties in Sandy. Um, and then that's the entirety of them right there on that map. And then the I two light industrial is shown in purple. So if you do approve the zone change tonight, that's what it would be changed to is purple.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
That little triangle right there, why, is it changing as well or changing that at all?
That's a great question. I think that if I recall when I started here, um, I believe it was actually I two. And for, I forget the specific reasons why, but I believe the property owner wanted to change to I one, probably for more commercial type uses, so more commercial type uses can go there. Um, and it is right across the street from like the Fred Meyer Gas Station. It's since that zone change happened, I think twelve, thirteen years ago, it's never moved forward with any sort of development proposal. Um, yeah, it'd probably be best suited to go back to I two at, at some point. Um, but typically, um, at least in my tenure with Sandy, we have allowed property owners to approach us on, on most zone change requests. So it, but I think it would be wise probably to look at that at some point in the future. Um, again, here's what the subject site looks like on the west side. Um, as you can see, or on the west side of the screen, or the left side of the screen, sorry. Um, as you can see, a lot of the site is not really visible from the right away. Um, on the right side of the screen, those are some of our I one uh, zone properties. This is not the, the view from the street, but all these buildings are pretty visible from the street. So just kind of giving you a sense of what the site looks like compared to other I one zoned sites in Sandy. Um, so on this, I just wanted to point out that the modifications, and I'll, and I'll let Andy as the applicant go into this more. But the modifications that will be being proposed to the site, if the zone change is approved, and probably even if it wasn't approved, um, would be additional facilities and buildings on the site consistent with the two thousand and twenty transit master plan. And so just a few things to point out, it's the action is to design a construction operator break room, training room, and expanded restroom for Sandy Transit. So I don't, I won't let Andy go into that a lot more if you guys have questions around that. But that would be dealt with through a separate design review application.
Kelly, I don't have my code book, but just for the novice in me, remind me about my planning commission days. What's the biggest difference between I one and I two? And why, why even make this change? Because my recollection says you don't even need it in order to do, do the work you want to do. So why are we in fact doing?
Yeah, it's a good question. So I, I, I think it's, I think it's twofold. I, I think it, it's twofold in the sense that, as I said, I think in two thousand and six, when we actually did the master plan of the site, it probably should have been considered at that time for a zone change. So I think historical patterns in Sandy of what the uses on the site would lend itself to reveal that this probably should have all along been I two. Um, but one of the other big benefits of going from I one to I two is not only is it reflecting what's actually built on the site, but it's allowing for a more simplified building design for buildings that are internal to the site. So as I'll show you on a few slides, uh, in a few minutes, and what staff and the planning commission have recommended is that the buildings that would be along the street, so additional buildings in the future were built along Champion Way, which I'm sure they will be. They would have to adhere to the design standard at, in two thousand and six, so they would look similar to the buildings. Whereas the buildings internal to the site that aren't visible from the street would have a simplified I two design standard.
That's what I wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's what the building is being proposed at at this time. So still a lot of wind. still a lot of windows, actually quite a bit of articulation on the building, um, but a simplified design, it's not a full-blown Sandy style design building. So in, in anticipation of reviewing this tonight, as I said, it's a quasi judicial amendment. So for anybody that doesn't know what that means, it just means that it's a zone change just for this property, um, so quasi judicial is usually just for a property or a small number of properties, whereas a legislative change would be something to your code, or something wholesale to the zoning district itself. So tonight, we're just looking at it through the quasi judicial lens. Um, and then the review criteria are in seventeen twenty-six forty B. And there's just four of them. Um, I'm not gonna read them all out, uh, but they're on the screen here, and so you just need to make sure when you're actually reviewing the zone change, that it meets the four review criterion. As we've shown in the staff report, staff feels like it does remain all four of those criterion, and the planning commission agreed with that as well unanimously. And then, actually, I thought I had it on a slide, but I guess I don't. Um, in addition, um, in, in the staff report, and as recommended by the planning commission, as I just pointed out to councillor Benton, uh, there would be some conditions around future development on the site. And those conditions basically say what I, what I already did say is that buildings that are along the road would have a more robust design standard, and they would have to meet the design of the other buildings that already exist on the site. That, those conditions that are being recommended tonight by the planning commission are consistent with the zone change conditions that we put on Mr. Gambino's property to the northeast of this, so we wanted to treat this city's own change request, the exact same that we had just treated a private property owner, uh, three or four years ago. And so the conditions are reflective of that, that are in uh, the exhibit for the ordinance tonight. And so with that, the planning commission and staff recommend city council approve the request for the zone change. And then if you choose to do that tonight, I have provided a recommended motion for you. And that's my, uh, report, Mayor.
Thank you. Kelly. Um, so here's the process for public testimony. Each person providing testimony must provide their name and address to, for the record. If you do not wish to state your address publicly, you must provide it to the city recorder before you begin your testimony. This can be done either in person or via email at recorder at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. Do that either before or after you speak, please email your materials to reporter at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S, and staff will make sure that your evidence is properly processed. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that is all you say. To offer public testimony, for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak. If you're per- participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you are participating, if you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait, wait to be recognized. I will call on each person when it is their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to five minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. So, uh, is there anyone here tonight that would like to testify? Jeff, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
Taking a look, Mayor, for any raised hands? Uh, and no, Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, very good. Um, Kelly, can you give a staff recap for us and a recommendation, please?
Yeah, before I do that, I'm just gonna let, uh, Andy as the applicant speak to anything you would like to add to whatever I said already, or if you have any questions of the applicant.
You did a beautiful job.
Okay, you don't want to add anything? Well, she has a rebuttal chance, so, uh, yeah, so my recap, my staff recap would just be to move forward with approval of the ordinance, and I'll turn it to the applicant for any rebuttal that she'd like to provide. None? Okay.
Okay, um. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll say it.
We have a motion from councillor Oakinson and a second by councillor Maiton to close the public hearing. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passed. Um, is there discussion about this proposal or questions?
Ask and answer.
Okay. Um, the only comment I would add is that you know, I was kind of looking through what's permitted, what's not permitted under uh, light industrial versus industrial park. There's a lot of stuff allowed in both of those that are the same thing. So I, except for, the only exception is if it's a public thing, if it's a public facility. And there is mentioned, you know, I looked at the definition for public facility, but when it's a public facility, and I can understand if it's a you know, store treatment plant or something like that, that's pretty controversial or whatever, but, um, it did seem a bit awkward that were, you know, all these other uses are allowed, um, outright permitted uses and public, any public facility is conditional use, is what it looked like. And so I'm, you know, I'm fine with that now, but I guess one of the things that I was looking at is, maybe we need to kind of take a look at that code in the future, so that people, even people like the transit department has lots of grant money and all available to them. Not, you know, if, if there's a reason to do it, and again, you know, if there's going to increase traffic on neighborhood streets or something like that, then by all means, but if there's, you know, if it, if it's similar to the other uses or even, you know, much less of an impact, which it seems like this is, then things that, you know, that the public could be asking to be put on there, then I guess, you know, I would like to consider that in the future, but um, it does seem like that's probably, like you said, Kelly, should have been done back when it was first, uh, master plan was first done, so those are my other comments. So.
Yeah, that's a, definitely an interesting observation, I'll have to look into that a little bit more.
Okay. Um, so we have a, a recommendation from, uh, our planning director. Um, would anybody like to, um, oh, no, let's see, first we, Jeff, may we get a first reading of the ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash oh one, please?
Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one, and ordinance amending the city of Sandy zoning map by changing the zoning map designation for five point seven two acres.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve first reading?
Mayor, I moved to the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh one to change the zoning of the Sandy Transit Operations Center, which is sixteen six ten Champion Way, from industrial park I one to light industrial I two.
May I have a motion, may I have a second? I have a second motion. Okay, we have a motion from councillor Maiton and a second from councillor Ramsayer. Um, all those in, voting in favor of the ordinance, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous, um, because it's unanimous, we're able to have a second read, may, have a second reading of the ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, and ordinance amending the city of Sandy zoning map by changing the zoning map designation for five point seven two acres.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the second reading?
I motion to approve the second reading.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by councillor Ramsayer and a second by councillor Sheldon, um, to approve the second reading. Um, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First year, okay. Um, let's see. Getting back to my agenda. Okay, we have a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, just want to say congratulations to the new council members and those that were reelected. Staff, looking forward to continuing to work with, uh, the returning councillors and looking forward to working with the newly elected ones as well. Uh, we've got goal setting scheduled for Saturday, February first, so over the next week or so, um, I'll be compiling, uh, a bunch of information to send out to the council, um, specifically containing updates on current council goals, as well as current department goals, the status of those goals, and then, uh, some of the sort of internal goals that each of our departments have, um, for the next biennium, so we can sort of paint a picture of where we're at and, and what's happening behind the scenes, so you're all aware of that going into goal setting. Um, also, just a quick update that we're working with our legal team to address some of the current issues we have around homelessness, specifically those issues that are near city facilities right now. Um, won't go into all of that, I just wanted to let you know that we're working on addressing some of the uh, concerns that we have internally around existing code language, and then some of the potential code changes that we may look to implement to tighten up, um, our ability to enforce what's happening around some city facilities. And I'll follow up more with that when we have some of those, uh, code changes actually highlighted. Uh, but we'll probably want to convene a homelessness task force meeting to talk about that in the near future, I know, uh, Mayor Walker, that's on your agenda to get, uh, those, um, uh, task forces staffed or, or
Assigned.
Assigned, thank you, that's the right word I was looking for. Uh, so we'll wait to schedule one thing until we have those new assignments, but just wanted to put that on the radar. Uh, also, we are kicking off budget development, um, with Tyler Wallace, new finance director. Lots of estimating ending fund balances, projecting revenues, we're getting by any of them, getting some of that initial behind the scenes work kicked off, so that we have a, a good starting point of where we're uh, gonna be at going into the new biennium and going into goal setting and, and budget development. Um, happy to report that we have a new utility specialist that started today, uh, Katie Bradford joined our team to fill the vacancy that was left when Jamie moved on, and so, and the finance staff is very happy to have another body in the building. Um, and we're working on getting her up to speed as quickly as possible, learning everything about utilities and all the other things that come along with being at the front desk of city hall. And then, uh, last but not least, staff will look into the two issues that were brought up tonight during public comment and get back to you, um, with information as soon as we're into.
Very good, thank you.
Wait. Didn't the former finance director screw up? You just want to talk about that?
I can.
What's that? I didn't hear it.
There were a couple odd findings, we addressed them in a corrective action plan that was adopted this evening on the consent agenda.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All fixed and.
It's all fixed, we're good to go.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Uh, the council reports, Don, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Thanks, uh, also buried in the consent agenda was the, uh, approval of the Sandy Net Advisory Board, and there were a number of good, uh, if it's, I've been on the, that board, you know, liaison for a period of time, and, and the energy you know, wasn't that high? Uh, but then with this, the master plan coming out, it was really invigorating to see how the, the, the current members of that board had embraced it. And even more exciting to me was that the one applicant who's new that we approved had read it and came to the interview informed and excited about it, and I was like, okay, this is cool, so anyway, it was a, I, I, I want to credit everybody who applied for that, because they were all very qualified, and, and that's, that's exciting to see. Um, it's where I cut my teeth twenty some odd years ago with Jeremy in the first initial form of that, that committee. Uh, second, I, I, I hope I was okay talking this, you, the mayor and I talked just briefly earlier, um, this week, and, and one of the things just kind of brainstorms, we're talking about some of the problems that we're facing and seeing in the city is maybe creating a permanent, you know, can bring this a permanent code compliance committee. Um, we have a task force that was targeted certain code sections, but that was just a short, very directed thing. And I think maybe, just like we do with wastewater, having a committee with some council members to have the code both sides, police and the, uh, building side come in, report the backlog, what are they doing, what are they seeing, what problems, and help the council stay more informed of the issues they're, they're saying, maybe it'll help us understand why things we think appear should be happening down there aren't. And if there's barriers, we can maybe help move it in, so that, that's something that, that I, I thought would be, I said, I, I'm very supportive of, we can do that. Uh, Winterfest, people still walking down lights tonight, it's a given. I, I think it's pretty cool, um, to take a festival that brings people into town and extend it throughout what would otherwise be a relatively slow part of the year unless you're renting ski equipment, so I, I have big hopes for where that goes, just you know, applaud everybody who worked so hard to make that happen. Uh, some of us were able to, uh, do a little, uh, Santa helper stuff in the park, and I gotta tell you, there is nothing more rewarding, one of the, the people I recruited came over to my house today and I don't know how long it's been since day before Christmas, what, two weeks, he's still floating, you know, this high about how funny he had, you know, being able to go out there and, and, uh, bring a little joy, so more of that. Um, I want to talk about two things on economic development, um, this is something that I, I I know everyone thinks I'm the sewer guy. But I'm, I'm, I'm more excited about things like economic development. The the potentials, as I've said before, economic development, I love a committee, but it doesn't happen because of committee, it happens because of towns grow, economies grow, breweries come in because of lots of good things happening. And, and it's a combination of lots of little things to happen. So one of the things that we've talked about is the idea of attracting living weights jobs. The mass timber industry, you guys heard me talk about it before, it's growing. Portland area has been designated as the U S National Center of Mass Timber, so government's pouring money into it. And two of the biggest outfits in the game are locating out in Eagle Creek, and I was able to go out and meet some of the, the key players uh, over the holiday and, and tour their facilities. Most impressive job site I've ever been in. The, the sour, uh, uh, so it's all timber, and it's one of the cleanest job sites, and I was just sitting there watching them stand up things and looking at how fast they were standing up partitions and things that I grew up in construction, you know, would have been an all-day event. They did, two of them while I was standing there, and an hour we were, you know, doing questions, so I think they've offered, if anyone's interested, we can do more tours down the road if anyone would like to. We're not going to bring in a facility like that because they need space, that's why that Eagle Creek area is going to grow, but they need spin-up industries. They need smart people who are doing CAD and, uh, and, uh, small part manufacturing and things like that, so there are supporting industries, we need to figure out how to tap into them, and, and they agreed. You know, the one firm I talked about, they're, they're gonna need a home of design engineers at some point. And these are the kind of people that love mountain biking and other things that we have to offer, so I think, I think it's an opportunity for us. The other thing, uh, that, that, that the test one they offered by, um, Julie and Jim today, uh, Julie Wilds and Jim Gander brought back memories of me starting up my restaurant and that, that thing about I, I'm a hundred percent sure the city wasn't intentionally trying to hide facts from them, right? That's, that's not what we do. But I also see it from their perspective, because I was in that perspective, trying to start up my restaurant, and not having all the facts and not having them all given to me in what I, in a format that I expected, to where I got surprises. Multiple surprises along the way that were financial, big, almost broke me before I started. This is an area we have to do better at. Um, right before Christmas, actually, it was right before the election, I met with, uh, Angelo, uh, the old Sandy Lumber Building. And, uh, for a meeting that a friend of, uh, my sons had, had set up and coordinated. And he told the same story. I mean, here on council, I, I'm pretty sure every one of us would bend over backwards to do whatever it takes to get something in that building, provided it's legal and whatever, but I mean, there's money through surf, urban renewal, there's, there's things that could be done to make something work there. But the story he told was almost mirrored what we just heard today about, well, I tried this and I got shut down here, and this didn't work, and it dragged on long enough that my client walked away, and and I know there's two sides to everything. But this is, I think this is where we really have to make a focus, if we're going to really turn, you know, call ourselves focused on economic development, we have to remove barriers. So that's, that's something that I, I want to see.
She wants to put a daycare, which is something we need.
Why, exactly?
It's for thirty, it's for thirty kids, and she owns two other daycares, so she's not new to the business.
So exactly, and, and here's the, here's the rough, it's the first time I'm hearing about it, you know? And maybe, maybe, maybe that's part of the problem, I don't know. But, but there, we've got to do a better job of that. Uh, these, especially with empty bay buildings. Last, uh, mayor, there was an email about, uh, I think it was Gresham or someone in the local areas sponsoring a, a housing meeting, and I just wondered if we were going to have representation of that. Maybe somebody.
Was that today? Yeah.
Time out today.
It was Multnomah County.
Multnomah County, yeah.
East County.
East County.
East County, yeah.
I, I think I saw that today.
I don't know, it's just something I throw out there, just to make sure that if we want to be involved, we get somebody on it. Um, thanks, look forward to going. Um, thanks, look forward to goals, and congratulations, and look forward to work with you all.
First off, I just wanna say, um, Mayor Walker, well done today. So, um, real big shoes to fill, maybe you did a good play. Well, thank you, and thank you, and congratulations. She did. The, um, congratulations to everyone who is, who is. And, and returning and, and all the good things, and I'm really looking forward to goal setting, and. I think the things that happened today were really exciting, the, the, the swearing-ins and the. The awards and, and all of those things, and I would love to see more of that happening in our community, more recognition of, of people that are. You're doing extraordinary things, because there are lots of those people in our community and they don't get recognized, no. I don't, maybe figure out some way to create an avenue of, of awards, you know, within the community members, hey, you know. A link on our, on the, on the app that says, hey, and let's nominate this person for, for something. Thank you.
Well, I don't have nearly as much insight as Donna or Lindy, but I will congratulate Mayor Walker. Um, I also want to thank everybody on council who helped me when I had a question. Um, in the election, because there was a lot of questioning myself and the procedures, and. I was never met with any resistance or any negativity, so thank you for that, that really helped to build confidence of someone who. Was really kind of last minute, jumping in with full feet and everything, just. Go, go, go. So thank you, everybody, for that, and I'm really happy to be here, and I'm, um, really looking forward to, um. Moving Sandy forward and keeping it the town that we love and the small-town feel and dealing with the issues that we're faced with and. Um, bringing people on board to kind of help and get involved and, um. Take part and take pride in ownership. So, thank you, everybody. What's that?
Yeah, I'm gonna keep it pretty short. I do wanna, uh, echo a lot of what Don said about, um. Economic development assisting, especially those things that we need out here, um. But also, to a degree, it is, it is the first time that I, I've also heard of it. Um, which may be part of it, and I think together, if we can kinda come together on these kind of things, I think we can get to a better spot all the times, but. Um, the last thing I have to say is, I just wanted to say congratulate, I'm. I don't know if I expressed it very well, really, I'm really excited to work with you all, uh, moving forward. Um, I, I really would like to see us moving forward, um. Be in a collective voice to how we can gather more resources for our community. Uh, even if that means we need, we don't necessarily agree on everything, and that's okay, in fact, that's the way it's supposed to work. But, uh, when it comes to this, it's, it's gonna, getting money from the outside specifically is gonna do nothing but benefit. The entire community, there, I can't see a downside to that, so, uh, I hope that we can, we can move forward collectively with that, and. Um, when we, when we make our ideas, when we bring our thoughts, that we bring them to a table and we do it unanimously, it'd be super helpful. Otherwise, um. Happy New Year. That's all I got. Thanks.
Nice. Um, I just wanted to congratulate the Parks Department on a job well done, uh, with Winterfest and all of the activities. I know it's a super, super busy time of the year for them, and, uh, it's a lot of setup, a lot of energy, a lot of staff time and hours to, to put that up. Starting back in October, September, maybe, so, yeah, yeah, it's a big, it's a big task, so.
I'm excited to share with you numbers as soon as we can get them.
They did a fantastic job, as always, so, uh. Uh, I did have somebody ask me a question, and, uh, this weekend, I couldn't answer, so I, I, I thought I'd just. Have we had any employees, uh, aside from, um, Jamie, take advantage of the volunteer opportunities?
I know there's been questions on the use of it, I'd have to double check with Angie and HR to see what's been entered in payroll, but I can certainly follow up with the. Success or take.
Yeah, just, just out of curiosity, um, if people are taking advantage of that, if it's, uh, being utilized at all. So, I'll follow up. Perfect, and, uh, that's all.
I'll be even shorter, I think. So, uh, congratulations again to the reelections, um, and also to the, the, the new election.
Thank you.
And congratulations to you, Mayor, um, on your victory as well. I'm excited for the next two years, I've been, I've been here two years now, so half, half my term. So, I'm, I got those training wheels on still rich, I think, uh, but I'm, I'm finding my path better more and more. Um, Don, I, I, I love what you had to say, and really, when I heard, um, that person come up and talk about that piece of property. Funny thing is, I drive by that piece of property at least three or four times a day to and from my house. I've watched the police there with the juveniles that were spray painting or drawing on it, breaking into it, I've. I've seen it empty for a very long time and would love to see it go to use, it burns my ears to have sat on planning commission to find out that. We can't make a daycare happen in this community when we need a daycare in this community, there has to be something we can do more of, um. If somebody needs my help, please call me, I'll be happy to dive in with you, but I think our staff should be able to help quite fine there, um. But other than that, I wish everyone a happy and a safe new year. Oh, last, I was, I did not know that we had hired a lieutenant. So that was good news, uh, for Sandy, and I was excited to see that on the agenda this. Oh, and I will be at the, uh, the East County, East, East Metro Counties Friday from eight thirty to one at Mountain Community College.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, um. I'm, you know, uh, riffing off of what, uh, Council Smallwood said, I also wanna thank all those folks that helped organize our holiday events. Huge turnout by the public, huge appreciation from residents and folks from all over. The state that came to see our events, so that was just really a lot of hard work, and we really appreciate it. The, um, I will be working on the committee assignment, so please let me know what your preferences are, and, um. And also just, you know, if we have a chance to meet in person, that's great, just to chat about what your goals are, um, and see. Uh, yeah, I'm just interested to hear those. Um, the, uh, I am looking forward to the goal-setting meeting, as I understand it. The department heads are going to bring their, um. Ideas for, goals for their each department and present that. Are we gonna get those beforehand, before the goal-setting?
Yeah, hoping to get everything compiled, uh, at the end of this week, but it might be first and next week, but it should give you a couple of weeks to, to browse it for goal-setting.
Great.
Can, can we make sure that the goal session, the time is allotted so that we have the majority of the time to discuss amongst ourselves, and we don't. Have ninety percent staff reports and. Ten percent.
Yeah.
Cause we're gonna go through that in the budget cycle anyway, I don't wanna do it twice.
Yeah, that's why having it out ahead of time, so everybody kinda understands it, it's just kind of an overview.
No offense staffers.
Um, okay, and then, uh, yeah, I am interested in, you know, how we're dealing with the homeless issues that we have. Um, because I, again, I've seen stuff where, you know, and it's, it's not a one-off, it's a continuous issue that, um. I would have imagined that we would have been able to handle it, uh, and. By now, but for whatever reason, so I'm very much, um, interested in gonna be taking some, you know. Extreme interest in how, and, and generating ideas, kinda looking, I've been looking at, like, what does the grants pass. Code say about camping, and maybe we need to be, you know, looking a little bit more at that, they, you know, they, they, I, I do like their code. There are some things in there that are a little bit stronger than even what we have, um. So we'll continue to kinda take, you know, see what we can do on that, because I know that, you know, I get comments from the public, and. You know, we thought we had these regulations that should be getting implemented, so what, what else, I, I really like. Uh, the suggestion that Don made about having, having something where we can really, um, take a look at it and. Um, take some action. So, um, city day is coming up on January twenty-eighth, I believe, and I believe that, uh, Rich and I are going. Um, we just got a one-pager, um, summary report that we're gonna give some feedback on, um, that just, again. You know, lays out the, you know, the huge need that we have to get some, uh, state funding for.
All of us, so that we're all on the same.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Did you send it out to everybody?
No, it's, it's a draft at this point, I'd like to, like, finalize it and then.
Yep.
Give it out to the council, and, and then, Mayor, if it's okay, and, and maybe after the meeting, hopefully we can find a time to have a meeting.
Yeah.
Talk about strategy.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, um. So, looking forward to that, and then. The biggest, you know, thing that I was, been losing sleep over is the pump track situation, and it's just, uh, crushing me. I kind of, I took pictures before Don had pictures at all, but the pump track, uh, situation is just, uh. Uh, extremely depressing, and I am. Mad as a hornet about it, honestly, um, because it, you know, it, they need to make this right, it is so. I took pictures the day after Christmas that were just, uh, shocking to me.
Hundred percent foreseeable.
Yeah, and so, yeah, yeah, and I, you know, I remember being out there on site with those folks at the beginning and talking about how. Well, the general contractor puts in all the storm drain pipes and, you know, the electrical and all that, and then the pump track folks, you know, then you hook into those. To drain and, and to, you know, and make sure that you work with both of them to get the elevation right, blah, blah, blah. So I did talk to Rochelle today, uh. The, our, ta-talked to directors, uh, Anna Home Harsh, and she was very helpful at explaining the situation and. What was being done about it, and it did take a big load off my, um, shoulders, just feeling like, okay, we're, we're, we're on it. And I did kind of, you know, say that I would be just talking to the council that, you know, my per, my position is that if we need to. Um, I, I know if there's not kind of a response from the, um, contractors that. You know, there is the need to bring in some legal, uh, folks, and that we wanna make sure that we're not just bringing in somebody who's good at the, you know, the. House, housing density or something like that, you need to bring in the lawyers that deal with infrastructure that has not been built right or too spec or whatever. So that's what they focus on, so I wanna make sure that we have the proper legal services to respond to this, and also any civil engineers that we need to hire. To figure out a short-term fix and a long-term fix if needed. When I, when I heard talk about March and all that, I was like, we can't wait that long, because. Already we've lost the turf, the, the ponds are, you know, starting to smell with. The turf rotting in there, and so that's an issue, and then also the under, underneath the pavement is going to kind of dissipate. You know, the soil underneath the pavement is going to, uh, be compromised and we'll lose the pavement too, so it's a huge investment and. Um, and it needs to be fixed as soon as possible, and so, I guess they are pumping it out.
We haven't had a hard freeze yet.
Right, right, and that's the other thing.
That high, we get a hard freeze.
Yeah, freeze thaw is gonna really screw it up even more, so, um, we need some immediate, uh, mitigation. And, you know, a short-term fix and a long-term fix, um, and whatever cost, but we need to, they need to make this right, um, so, yeah. Broke, you know, it, it was such a great thing, and then to see this disappointment, and, and the other thing I would said is that, you know. We need to be free about sharing this with, you know, I know Corvallis is looking at hiring them for a pump track, and so everybody needs to understand, this is what, you know. Here's the product we got.
They have a short window to fix this before they have a PR problem.
Right, exactly, so, anyway, um, I'm hopeful that it gets fixed soon, so, um. But other than that, I appreciate everybody coming in out tonight, you saw all my friends, not one of them lives in the city limits and can vote for me. But they are my, uh, great supporters, and of course, my family has been really helpful, and I appreciate all their help to, um, get us through this. So I'm excited about the team that we've got here tonight, and, and the staff that we have in place, it's really exciting, I'm really, um. Uh, ready to go, you know, to look at goal-setting and see what you all want, and what is, you know, hearing from the public. Um, I really do wanna kinda hear what their priorities are, other than the obvious, you know, reduce my water bills and things like that. Um, so let's, let's get to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Motion?